To call a meeting to order, advise everyone that this meeting is being recorded. Doesn't look like there's anyone in attendance tonight that's recording, so would you please join me with the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of our Lord and of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Good evening, everyone. I don't believe we have any special recognitions tonight or citizens' concerns or comments. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular session minutes from February 13th, 2013.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstain, abstention. And we will now move on to the student representative's report, and Rita's with us this evening.
Hi. I'd like to say congratulations to all the sports teams for winter sports. They all had great seasons this year. And a special congratulations to Nathan Conway for placing fifth in New England for high jump with a new school record of six feet and five inches. Winter ball is this Saturday at seven o'clock at the high school. This trimester ends on Tuesday, March 12th, next week. Staff development day is on March 15th, next Friday, and also International Club will be holding a brunch. I think we're starting at about 10:00, 10:00 a.m. on March 15th, next Friday. And Lester's also joining us that day, too. On March 15th and 16th, the South Pacific Play will be performing on Friday and Saturday. And Mr. Auburn is being held on March 21st at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can now move on to the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item, we have Mr. Handfield here, high school principal, to provide you an update regarding changes to the program of studies with my recommendation for you to approve it. So with your permission, I'll turn it over to Mr. Handfield.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Brunel said, you have before you the 2013-14 Auburn High School Program of Studies. And, you know, I guess for the last week or so, week and a half, I was sort of kind of in a reflective mood, and this document being one of those items of reflection for me. And, you know, this probably might be the document that I'm the most prized of in my eight years as a high school principal. You know, Liz and Leanne and others at home who were watching, who, you know, were here eight years ago, you know, when it was my first year. We're a very different high school for the better. We're a very different school district for the better, and I'm proud to give this document to you tonight for your approval, hopefully. This program of studies is going to illustrate, or does illustrate, rather, so much work on behalf of our teachers, so much work on behalf of our students, so much work on behalf of you, the school committee, and so much work on behalf of our townspeople who support the schools. This coming school year, we are going to be continuing in our MEMZI initiative. We have 13 MEMZI and non-MEMZI advanced placement courses running right now at Auburn High School with 247 enrollments. This coming school year, in 2013-14, we'll be offering 15 courses. We're adding AP Psychology, we're adding AP Computer Science. A recent review of the grades of our students enrolled, of those 247 enrollments, recently with Dr. Brunel and Dr. Lausay, showed that our students are doing remarkably well across all disciplines. So we're very proud of that. We're very proud of our kids, we're very proud of our teachers. In addition to the MEMZI portion of our program of studies, we're also, you'll see throughout here, there's, continues to be diverse offerings for our kids in technical and vocational areas. We continue to offer STEM programming as part of our district strategic plan. College seminar, which is being taught very successfully out of the guidance office, continues. Our SAT preparation for students continues going into next year. And, you know, I think one of the things that's really important to highlight is that there's just, there's so much that goes on at Auburn High School in addition to the academics. You know, we have exchanges now with Spain. We have exchanges now in China. Soon to be set up, I should say, in China. You know, I had the opportunity to spend a weekend, two weekends ago, in Boston with our Model United Nations. Our kids were terrific. This past weekend, we had students at UMass Dartmouth in a photography competition. First time we've ever sent kids out to something like that. Walking through the building today, I popped into a collaborative effort between Mrs., between Ginny Bailey and Jason Bergman, where they're bringing television and music together through independent film scoring class. And so students are making their own videos and scoring them musically with equipment that we have. And a lot of that is through the gracious, you know, donation of our local cable committee. So, Mr. Page, on behalf of the high school, we'd like to thank them, you know, for allowing us to enhance our curriculum in that manner. But, you know, as I said to start tonight, you know, when I look across our curriculum, it's so much goes on in our school. It's such an enriching place, and I'm just very, very proud to bring this forward to you tonight. There truly is something there for every single student. You know, if a child is looking for something, we offer it, and if we can't offer it, we'll find a way to try and make it happen. And the cover of our program of studies, it says "Strive for Excellence, Not Perfection." And that, I think, is something that we try to carry out each and every day. You know, there's probably seven things today that I didn't do perfectly. Matter of fact, there's probably eight. I just thought of an eighth one. But nevertheless, we continue to strive for excellence, and I think as, as I look back across the eight years and I stand before you tonight, I think, you know, there's a lot of work left to be done still as we continue that pursuit of excellence. But I think we're certainly in a much better place today, probably in the best place we've ever been, as I stand before you today, than we have been in any year previous, so. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to entertain that. Otherwise, that's really all I have to say. There's not too, too much, you know, to it that's, that's different, other than the adds to those.
George.
At what point do the students receive the program of studies? The eighth grade, or is it an open house type thing?
We just had our open house on Monday evening upon your approval this evening. I will go back and once over this one more time with our guidance director and with our department heads, and then this will go live online on our website. As part of one of our initiatives at the high school in going green, it's streamlining our use of paper. So rather than creating 900 of these, we create just a few to keep on hand, and then we go digital with the rest. And our councils are just at the eighth grade today, with the eighth grade today at the middle school, rather, talking to about course selection, and they'll be instructed, parents and students, to go to our online document, and they can take a look at that because it is a living and breathing, you know, you know, thing. If we have something that needs to be changed or corrected or whatever, we can pull it down, change it, and throw it right back up in a matter of five minutes. So that's where that can be found, as well as our student handbook.
Thank you. Liz?
How are the trimesters going? Are you finding that they're?
They're actually going, I think, very well. I think, you know, and Rita can probably speak better to it than I can. I mean, she lives it every day. I think from a matter of looking at, you know, student achievement, you know, I think that we are, you know, for the most part, we're, we're, we are where we'd like to be right now. There are other areas, you know, a few areas, that we need to continue to, to improve upon. But I think overall, it's giving us the flexibility that we were seeking, you know, to kind of move our schedule around as we saw necessary. There'll be some adjustments next year that we'll be making to accommodate sophomore PS, or I should say sophomore SAT preparation using their PSATs from the fall. We have that flexibility in the trimester to make those changes happen. We also have some changes coming, looking down the road as a result of Common Core, where, you know, we're kind of compressing our curriculum. And so the trimester allows us to compress, you know, in a fashion that makes sense for us, whereas in other schedules, it wouldn't necessarily do that. So, you know, we're happy with it. It needs to, you know, it's like everything else. We sit back and look at it every year, and this is our third year, so we're, we're making some minor tweaks to it. But I think overall, for what the intended purpose was three years ago and for what we have seen out of it thus far, we're, we're happy with it. And I, I mean, Rita can jump in and give you the student perspective.
Well, I remember freshman year, we didn't have the trimesters yet, and comparing that to the trimesters now, I, I mean, I personally love the trimesters because there's like, there's simply more time to do stuff. I mean, you have five classes to really focus on, and you have much more time to study for those classes. And before freshman year, you have a lot of classes, and they're shorter, which means you have less time to do things and less homework assigned, but you have less studies to focus on. I mean, now with the trimesters, I, I like them, and there's much more time to do things in class and get stuff done, and I think, I think the trimesters are much better than...
And I didn't even pay her to say that either. That's good.
That's really good.
But, you know, to her point, though, I, you know, I think, to her point, I think, you know, the 65-minute classes, 67-minute classes that we're offering is, are giving our teachers and our students enough time to get entrenched in the material, actually work with it hands-on, and tie it up and wrap it up before they move on. Whereas in the previous schedule, you were just getting settled, and it was bells ringing and off you go. A perfect example would be the film scoring class that I just talked about. They're doing, they're knee-deep in their work. It took them about 20 minutes to get there, but they still have another 20, you know, 30 minutes, 35 minutes, 40 minutes even, to really work through some concepts and things that they were talking about. One of our STEM courses, our Environmental Engineering, which is a collaboration between Mr. Bedard and the InteC Ed part of our building, and Mrs. Aries in our Science Department. Students are studying the idea of usable energy, reusable energy with homes, and so they're building prototypes. And it was one of the things actually we, we were doing when our Chinese visitors came a few weeks ago, which, by the way, was terrific. And they were totally in awe of that, we were able to build prototypes and manipulate things. But that 65-minute timeframe allowed them to get into class, discuss what they were going to do for the day. Half the class went down to the woodshop, the other class, half of the class stayed upstairs. Then they swapped, then they came back together, all within that time period. So it really was a nice way to, to start and to finish, and plenty of time for them to really kind of get entrenched and really kind of go to those higher water levels of thinking and, and production and creativity that frankly we want to engender in our kids. So on a variety of levels, I mean, yeah, it's, it's going very well.
Can I make a comment? I'll, I'll do that after questions, but I just had a comment to make.
Through the chair. For the student who's not performing as, as well as Rita, at what point would they receive a progress report, or some parents would receive some type of notification that they may not be doing well? I mean, if we don't have midterms?
Well, with the I-pass, with, with the I-parent, rather, you know, teachers' grades, you know, should be up to date every two weeks. That's kind of been the agreed-upon, you know, rule of thumb kind of across six through 12. Certainly, you know, if there's need for intervention prior to that, you know, it's incumbent upon our teachers. But it's also incumbent upon our parents, too. Now that they have that tool available to them, they can see lifetime. I know I can. I mean, you know, my, my poor daughter. Every couple days, I'm kind of on there looking just to see what's going on. But they have that tool readily available to them. Whereas that's even better than, say, a two-week or a three-week or a four-week progress report. They can see all that lifetime. So it's kind of a constant, ongoing, you know, evaluation of their assessment, you know, of how their kids are doing. But, I mean, we still at the high school have mechanisms in place where if a child's not doing well, you know, whether it's through the guidance council to the parent, from, you know, the teacher to the parent, from the teacher to the student even, you know.
So it's easy enough for them to figure out what the run-in average is for each class? I mean, I know each class has certain projects due, which are worth a certain amount of points. So it's easy enough for them after, let's say, three weeks to a month to figure out what the running average?
Yeah, even, I mean, even, even before that. I mean, by, you know, I mean, when you start a new trimester, I would say probably at the two and a half to three-week mark, you have a pretty good idea, but definitely as you get into kind of the third, a third of the way through the tri in that week four, four and a half mark, there's usually a pretty good indication of how they're doing. You know.
So that part of it's going pretty smooth, and you don't think that's one of the things that needs an adjustment?
Well, it's one, well, if I'm going to be honest with you, yeah. I mean, human nature is every once in a while, you got to kick a few people in the tail and say, hey, get the grades in, you know, get that updated or whatever. I mean, that's human nature. And so, yeah, we deal with a little bit of that, but, you know, by and large, you know, the teachers are very, very good about getting that updated. And, and our parents are using that tool. When we first went to that and opened up the grade parent portal, and parents were, you know, signing on and getting access codes, et cetera, we had a lot of phone traffic. Parents, you know, how can I get in, or my password doesn't work, or, or whatever. And then just tracking the daily usage, you know, it's getting quite a bit of foot traffic. So parents aren't surprised. A lot of times, parents will call us and they'll already know what the grade is or what the issue is because they've already looked before we've had an opportunity to look. And so we're able to log on and look at them real-time and discuss things. But, yeah, overall, yeah, I think it's going very well.
Okay. Thank you. I have to say, too, as a parent that utilizes it quite frequently, even my, my kids at times want to go on and take a look. I've never had an issue. It's always been very timely, and I think it's a great tool. I can't promote it enough. Anyone that's watching this, or if you know parents that have students that aren't utilizing this in the middle school and high school, please take advantage of it. It's excellent. I'm sorry, Liz.
I have to tell you, I, as you said at the beginning, I was here when you started. And I really can't say enough really good things about that school, that we have just seen such a great progression. And I think the best part of it is, first of all, I can't believe it's been eight years, but I feel the best part of all of this is, is that at eight years, or at six years or four years, when things are going as successfully as they have been, it's really easy to sort of become complacent, and I haven't seen that at the high school. I've seen that every year, you want to do something to make that place better. And I, I truly feel that if a student wants to be successful at Auburn High School, they will be. There's, the teachers seem to really want to make the kids successful. And I, I would look to Rita to say, yes, or no, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but from my experience with my own children, if they needed help, there, there was always somebody there that was going to stay after school, or stay there during lunch, or whatever they needed to do to help that, you know, that student.
And I think, you know, to your point on that, you know, when Lynn Barrett was here a couple of weeks ago with Ashley, and they were talking about the Black Oak Bowling Day and, you know, at the State House, and Lynn talked so much about the culture of the building. You know, I mean, it's like, I call it, you know, it's like my second house. It's like any house. I mean, you're going to have issues in your house every once in a while. But overall, I think it's, you know, and many of you have come through at different ti, points during the day. It's quiet, it's orderly, but it's buzzed with activity. Kids are doing great things, you know, not just academically, but even the co-curricular areas that I just mentioned. You know, eight years ago, there was no Model UN, there was no photography club that was competing. You know, we weren't sitting at the, at the Park Plaza in Boston, watching our kids slug it out with the University of Chicago Laboratory School. I mean, that's impressive stuff.
Yep.
You know, that's impressive stuff. And, you know, there is, you're right, still, though, there is still work to be done. We can do better. We're committed to doing better, and our kids deserve nothing less. And that's, I think, the, the district philosophy, not just at the high school.
Absolutely.
You see it across all buildings. I see it, I see it at Packard Drive where my son is, I see it at the middle school where, where my daughter is. And I know from my colleagues in other buildings, it's just, that's just where we're at. So it's a great, great time to be, you know, in the school district and be part of it. But that's it.
Actually, I was, actually, almost word for word going to say what you said. I also, like, like you said, Mr. Handfield was here, you know, years ago, and I'm just, I'm just so thrilled at, at where we've gotten to. I mean, I'm just, I'm so happy about the virtual high school and just all the different things that have taken place over the past few years. And like Liz said, you know, you're not complacent. You're always looking to keep, you know, improving and continuing and opening up opportunities and things, and I'm just, I'm just really thrilled, and I'm really excited about this. I do have one question.
Sure.
The virtual high school, I noticed, is, is limited to 25 spots. Do you have waiting lists? Do you have kids that are, like, actually trying to?
Well, we have 25 spots that we, that we, we purchase, and then we have, we do get an additional allotment of spots because we have a teacher who teaches in, in the virtual high school program. In terms of a waiting list, yeah, I mean, it's not huge.
That's a good thing. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, it's not a huge waiting list, but, yeah, we, we have students who, who access it, you know, for a variety of, of different reasons. But, yeah, it seems to be readily available. It's one of the things that we were talking about as we were preparing for this year, you know, are those seats being utilized, are they being utilized to capacity? And it seems that we have, you know, kind of just what we need. I mean, in a school of, you know, 680, typically our kids who are going to take advantage of that are typically going to be our upperclassmen because our ninth and 10th graders are, you know, entrenched in their, you know, MCAS-related courses. So, but, yeah.
Great job, Dr. Brunel. Great job, really. You know, as you was the leader and, and all your leadership team, I'm just, you know, it probably sounds murky and stupid, but I, I just, I'm thrilled. I'm just really proud of this district. I really am.
Can I ask one question? I, no, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, you did get a group of high school students together that had grad, I'm sorry, students together that had graduated and asked them, you know, about how Auburn High was able to prepare them. And I was wondering if you have any plans to do that again?
You know, I didn't, I think it's a great idea. We did that a few years ago. I actually think it may have been probably three years ago now. Dr. Lausay and I did it, and it was very enlightening. It was great feedback, so I, I will look to do that again. Yeah, it's a great idea.
And I don't know if you just brought in college students, but maybe even bringing in some students that didn't go to college, just to find out how, how Auburn High prepared them for different situations.
Sure.
But I know it's, to me, I got a lot of, you know, I heard a lot of the feedback.
It was great feedback we got.
It was interesting.
Yeah, it was, it was. And, and through the chair, I think that, and thank you for all of the comments, Auburn High School does continue to push forward, and, and as Mr. Handfield said, I think it really is a district mantra that we have. But, you know, one of the things that I find most impressive with this program of studies is the sheer volume and variety of really top-quality classes that are being offered for a relatively small high school, you know, for less than 700 students. It really is not a huge high school. It's actually, I mean, it's a great-sized high school, but it really speaks to the commitment to be sure that there are those opportunities for students at every level, in every interest area, to find something in which they can really excel and, and grab onto. So I think it is a, a testament to the commitment across the district and certainly the staff at the high school. So I commend everyone for their hard work.
If there aren't any more questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2013-14 program of studies for Auburn High School as provided by Mr. Handfield.
I make a motion to approve the 2013-2014 program of studies for the Auburn High School as provided by Mr. Handfield.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I, I'll just say, I totally echo everything that Liz said. I just, I can't, there's no words, and anyone that's watching this tonight, Casey, could see. I mean, you're a class act, you do a great job for our kids, and I think it is important to recognize our other administrators and teachers and staff that are making sure Auburn's on the map.
I want to echo everything everybody said, too, but Casey, you brought out the other schools, and that's a class act, when you're bringing all of them together to work together. And I want to thank you.
Well, it's a team effort, you know, certainly.
No, but it's, it's there. That's the thing, and you brought it out in your speech, even though we were just talking about the high school.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Don't forget South Pacific.
Yeah.
You might be surprised at who's in it.
Ah! Oh! Good night, thank you.
Very impressive.
Hi, have a good night. Good night.
You, too.
Do your homework.
Because you never do, right?
She's already done.
She is. Her little kid.
Great kid.
Say?
Yes, through the strategic plan?
The next item here, if you recall, the strategic plan was first created back in 2007, and we had an update three years ago, or almost four years ago now. And as you see in the updates that have been brought forward, we've taken a lot of items out of there and put them in our completed, in a completed file. It was always our intention to come back and, and more or less start from scratch and look to the next five years or even beyond. So it is my recommendation that you approve the establishment of a strategic plan committee. I've put in here some proposed dates that are available, and what I'd like to do is notify the community, parents and the community, through our email system, as well as through local media and the local cable channel about these. And I, I put forward these dates now because calendars are getting filled with middle school project efforts and whatnot. So with your approval, I'd like to, to start this effort.
I'll make the motion to approve the establishment of the strategic plan committee as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Discussion?
As somebody who has been through that process, it's truly a wonderful thing. It gets the whole community involved, and we really are able to get some really good ideas, and the community is behind it, and it's, it's really a very good, good thing to do.
If you look at the, the goals and objectives and activities that were going to be undertaken in 2007 and see, that, you know, my guess is probably upon its creation, there was someone who thought, we may not get there. I mean, we've met most of them and exceeded in many areas, so I think there's something to be said for setting the bar high. So we'll look to do that again in this regard.
That was going to be my comments, that I, you know, I've, I've looked through the strategic plan, and I, I'm amazed at what's been accomplished, and, and, you know, Liz said, the community is the one that asked for this information, so it's really, it's really a great, great exercise to go through, so, yeah. Yeah, great.
Anything other comments? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, Mr. Handfield mentioned this in his overview. We've been part of the MEMZI, the mathematics, Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative, and it really helped elevate the advanced placement classes that we have, but also monetarily contributed a tremendous amount financially in terms of supporting our teachers in training. Budgets being as they are and funding being on a decreasing level, they are looking for a commitment from us for $15,000. Now, that money that we would pay would actually pay for a portion of the training that our teachers, teachers would get, pay for a portion of the Saturday study sessions that are provided to our students, the transportation that's provided to them, as well as materials. So as you can see in here, for a contribution of $15,000, we'll get in total over $60,000 worth of training support and materials. So MEMZI is contributing $43,615. So it is a tremendous value add at the high school. Our students are taking advantage, as you heard, 247 students in AP classes at the high school. So it is my recommendation that we can, you continue to support this effort.
I'll make the recommendation to continue to support the district's affiliation with the Massachusetts Mathematics and Science Initiative that across the $15,000 2013-2014 school year.
I'll second. I have a question. Is that, right now at the high school, every, every so many weekends, they go to either another high school or they come here?
Correct.
To talk to, study for the AP exams. Is that part of this?
That's part of this.
That's fantastic.
Yes, that's part of this.
It really is a fantastic program.
Yep. That is, that's a key component of this program, is doing those Saturday, Saturday study sessions, and we've had great attendance from the Auburn students in that, great attendance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I would just like to make a comment to the, to the community, just so that the community is aware, that the funding is coming from the District Ride Professional Development Line that's been accounted for already during the budget period. So it is money that we were prepared to allocate, so I don't want people to think we're taking it from other spots.
Good point.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote?
We have a couple of donations. Members of the community continue to be generous to the Auburn schools. The first, Bryn Mawr School has been adopted by BJ's, which comes with a five hundred dollar donation and a one-year free membership to BJ's Wholesale Club. And then secondly, the Auburn Mall donation of food court furniture to the Auburn Public Schools that Mr. Feige helped to coordinate, so it's my recommendation that you accept both of those.
I'll make that motion. Can we do both at the same time?
You can.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
As you are all aware, Mr. Didi has tendered his letter of resignation effective May thirty-first, and I know you joined me, asked us the community, and wishing him well in assuming the job of business manager at Leominster Public Schools. So I share that with you as well as notifying you that Mr. Giadano, who is the assistant principal of Auburn Middle School, has put in his letter of retirement, which will not come until the end of next school year, but just wanted to make you aware of that. I have formed, in the process of forming a team for hiring a top-quality replacement to assume the role of business manager, and due to schedules being what they are, those interviews will be conducted on Saturday, March sixteenth, so a week from Saturday. Likely, we're anticipating potentially an eight-thirty to three o'clock day. I know Saturdays are sometimes more challenging, but I share this with the committee. I know in the past, we've always had school committee representatives and would welcome that if it's your desire to do so again.
First, I just want to say thank you for your service to the district, I wish you well.
Thank you.
And to the committee members, is there anyone that is interested in serving? No, I would be.
If it's on a Saturday, I can.
I was just going to say, if we're going to do a Saturday, I would, I could do a Saturday.
So it's, it's up to, do you want two committee members?
You can't have more than two, so the most you can have is two, so it's.
I wouldn't like, I want you and Leanne to do it, because I do quite a bit of stuff already.
Would you, would you like to, anyone else?
You guys.
I would like to serve, actually, on this.
I'll make a motion to have Jeff and Leanne.
I'll second that.
So we do have a motion in a second, is there further discussion?
Just, just a little bit, just one comment, is it behooves us to have people on this committee because it is our responsibility to hire the business managers, so I'm glad that people are willing to do this.
I look forward to serving on this with you.
And for the record, that's why I'm not going to take part, because I don't feel like I could give it a hundred percent, and I think that's what it deserves.
So I, it's a privilege to serve, thank you.
I'll be in touch with the two, oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion in a second? Call them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're good?
Just a few highlights to share. Mr. Handfield touched upon a couple of them. The Auburn High varsity basketball team, the boys' team, did win the large schools' Clark Tournament, very exciting games, very hard-fought games that they deserved to win. The Model UN, I was corresponding with Mr. Handfield, that was taking place the same day as the students were playing at Clark University, and the same pride and excitement that I had felt when I was down at Harvard University for the We the People event, it was clear that he was feeling with our students. So it was a great event, and they leave in a couple of weeks to head down to Washington, DC, which is something you've approved and they're very much looking forward to. And then finally, two students at Auburn High School, Nicole Graham and Katie Falkengren, did have photography, photographs that were in the UMass Dartmouth program, so it was very exciting. And you'll see, actually, coming out later this week is the district quarterly newsletter, this edition being dedicated to the arts and athletics, and you'll see that there are just a wide variety of accolades and achievements of our music, our arts, and our athletic students that really speak to not only their commitment, but to the many coaches that we have, so many of them are on staff, there were some that, who aren't, but really give it a hundred percent, so, who knows to all. Just a quick update on the federal sequestration. If you've had your TV on or read a newspaper over the past couple of weeks, it seems to be all that is consuming it out there, at least certainly leading up to the March first deadline. As you know, they did not act on this, so those cuts are anticipated to take place. So I had just put in here an update from Jay Sullivan. Mr. Didi had shared, he's the executive director of school finance and district support at DESI, so we'll continue to keep you apprised, I think this is going to be an ongoing, moving target, so we will, but it will not impact our current fiscal grants, so we're fine with that. And then finally, just to make you aware that the ethics disclosure statements that are required have been completed for the district, and I thank Mrs. Zottner for her coordination of that monstrous task, so that has all been completed as well.
Thank you. Before we move on to unfinished business, one thing I did forget, just, Mr. Giadano also wanted publicly recognized him tonight for his service to the district, as well as he's going to retire after the next school year.
Yeah, thank you.
That being said, if we could now move on to unfinished business.
Okay. Share with you that Mr. Didi and I met with Town Manager Jacobson and Chief Financial Officer Kazanovich a couple of weeks ago now regarding the school department's draft budget, and they have brought forward to both the Board of Selectment and Finance Committee recommendations for all, the overall Auburn town budget. If you'll recall, in the budget kickoff document was a total value, which was level-funded from this year of twenty-one million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, plus a two percent allotment for wage increases. So that in total reflected a two-point-four-one percent increase. Based on some recalculations and some further information that has come out from the State Department and the communications they've had with our representatives, the two percent local aid reduction they had originally anticipated, I mean, excuse me, the three percent that they had originally anticipated, they've now backed down to two percent. There have been some other areas that they have found some potential savings, so the school department's recommended budget from them at this point is twenty-two million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which represents a two-point-seven-eight percent increase. If you'll remember, we are currently at a three-point-one-four percent increase, so there's the gap of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I would say to you that I think, looking back in years past, this is probably the best position that we've been in, this early in the budgeting process. So my recommendation is that we, we stay with the budget that you have currently and wait to see the, the House Ways and Means budget, I believe, is due out at the end of this month, or early April.
Through the chair, the end of this month?
The end of this month.
For the House, for the Senate, it's in April.
Yeah, from the House, we'll see, and then Senate comes out later, so there's much work to happen, and later on, you'll see that Senator Moore has accepted the invitation of you, of the committee, to come and speak to us, so he may have more information. So I think at this point that we hold steady with where we are, and, you know, there's always the option for you to, to make changes to this, either way. Very happy to report that Mr. Garner informed and confirmed that Auburn High School will have what's technically will be known as the Thanksgiving Day Game. It will be held on the Tuesday evening prior to Thanksgiving, though, just in terms of the long commute. The game will be played against the Northeast Metropolitan Regional High School, Technical High School, which is in Wakefield. So we're thrilled for our students to have a game and to be able to continue the tradition. This will be a two-year agreement, so that they will come to us this first year, and we will go to them next year, then with the opportunity, should the desire be there, for them to look for a more local opponent, if one would become available.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Do we know what type of facility they have as far as bleachers, or what type of field they have, or is it turf, grass?
I don't know that. I could find that out to let you know, I honestly don't know. That I can tell you that Mr. Garner was pleased, as is Mr. Cormier and our students, obviously, to have an opponent, they felt it was a worthy opponent, they felt it would be a good competitive game. So my guess is it's, it's probably a program that's well-supported, but that's an assumption on my part, I don't know.
I understand, we needed to play someone on Thanksgiving, I was just curious if it was, some of the fields that you go to for a Thanksgiving game, you can't actually watch the game because it's all at ground level, and there's no bleachers, I'm just, just curious, something I could certainly research myself.
Sure, yeah.
Thought I would throw it out there so everyone would know what they were getting into.
Okay. We'll be sure.
Through the chair, if I may, I would just like to publicly thank Mr. Garner, because I know this is a huge undertaking, and I know that this was something that he strived very, very diligently to achieve, so, so thank you to him for working so hard to get this done.
I agree, I agree. It would have been a shame for our students, especially our seniors, to not, next year's seniors to not have a game, so, I agree. In terms of the school building committee update, we did just get notified from MSBA, and we confirmed a date today when Mr. Imzy and myself, along with Representatives of Skanska and LPA, will go down for that intermediary meeting, and that will be on March fourteenth at noon time, and that's at the time when we'll go to hear what MSBA will contribute, what they'll participate in, and should have some pretty firm numbers in terms of costs, that we'll be able to then start to share that information. This is in keeping with our anticipated timeline, the first public presentation that we'll do is, has been planned for Monday, March eighteenth, in the auditorium of Auburn High School, and we'll be able to, our intention is to share projected impact, cost impacts at that time, and we should be able to do so. And I did include for you an updated publicity listing, we continue to put that on the website and make changes to it as they come, but we continue to go and promote this project to anyone and everyone who will listen. I had a great presentation last night from Mr. Jason Tate from the Office of Campaign and Political Finance regarding the do's and don'ts, especially for public employees and public figures, in terms of the promotion of this, so I found it to be very helpful, and I know Mr. Laurie and Mrs. Gibbrey were there, as well as members of the SBC, so it was a great program. Just a reminder, the public hearing on the Auburn School's budget will be Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, and then another reminder that bus applications are due May first. We did send out a copy to our thirty-six-hundred email members in our list served, so that went out, and hard copies are going home, if they've not already, for each of our schools The, two letters that you had asked be drafted, the first one is one that we sent to Senator Moore and Representative Frost, and we invited them to come to a school committee meeting, as noted previously. Senator Moore has accepted and will be attending on April tenth, and should we hear from Representative Frost, we will certainly welcome him for a visit as well. The other letter you asked me to draft, and I have here tonight for your signature, should you wish to do so, is in support of State Auditor Suzanne Bump's ruling regarding the implementation of Chapter two-twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and twelve, which was in regards to students' access to educational services and inclusion. If you remember, Ashmanham, Westminster, and Leverett School Districts actually sought her guidance or a ruling from her stating that, you know, this was creating an unfunded mandate, she has agreed, so I think that your signature and letter of support on this would be helpful, I think, as this goes forward.
Here's what's inside of you.
You want to pass it around?
Could you pass it around? Yes, that would be great. And while you are signing that, I'll just give you a quick update. I attended on Monday down in Boston at the Ostegui Recovery High School, and this school is really for students who are not able to be successful in a public school due to substance abuse issues, oftentimes combined with some other emotional behavioral challenges, and had the opportunity to sit, Mayor Petty had, Mr. Mayor Petty had invited me to attend, Superintendent from Worcester was there, as well as a superintendent from Webster. And should this go forward, and I think that we all agreed it had held great promise, you know, while we'd like to think that students don't, are not challenged, or some students are not challenged by substance abuse issues, the reality of it is, it knows no boundaries, and so we had agreed that we will be meeting again likely within the month or so, and it would likely be run through the Central Mass Collaborative, which actually Worcester and Webster belong to, but they would be looking to include or invite in area school districts, so I will keep you apprised.
Can I ask a question about that? So if this were to go through and we had students that we were going to send, we would send there, then how does that work? Do you know, will we pay for them to go there, and we pay for the transportation, et cetera?
Yes, so it really, they would still be required to complete all local graduation requirements, they need to complete MCAS, it really is just an extension of the public schools, just like we have auto-district offerings right now for students, whether they have cognitive challenges, substance abuse challenges, behavioral challenges and whatnot and stuff, so, and the cost was considerably less than what's currently available right now, considerably less, and of a very good quality, thank you, program from what we could see. It was really very successful, and two young men in the program came in and spoke to us about what had led them to that place in terms of their previous life experiences and the challenges that they were, that they were going through, but each of them was successful in remaining clean and in completing all of their coursework. That's one of the great benefits of it, is that it is an environment in which all of the students are struggling with the same things, it has a heavy counseling component to it as well, so, two very courageous young men, I was, I was impressed.
So, so is the hope that you would, that a student would go there all four years, or that they would go there until a recovery is completed and then they could return?
It really varies, we, those are some of the questions asked, it really is on a case-by-case basis.
Sure.
You know, the two young men that were there, one of them had been at the school, had to step away to kind of pull things back together for himself, and one was a senior and one was a sophomore, so the senior had not been there for all four years, he didn't enter until somewhere between his sophomore and junior year.
And can I ask one more question? Is there a component that brings parents in and?
Heavy component, it's a huge piece of it, that there be counseling with the family and whatnot, and requirement that parent do the intake, and so that way they can assess what the issues are, because not always, not to generalize, but oftentimes it's not a singular issue, it's a piece of a larger puzzle.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. The, okay, the warrant articles, these are the same that Mr. Didi had presented before, we don't require that you vote on them this evening, the warrant, we were notified, is open until March twenty-fifth, we do have another meeting. I think it probably may behoove you to just not vote these as the final ones until we have the meeting on the twenty-fifth, not that I anticipate anything changing or coming up, but it would give you the opportunity to change it if need be.
Move on to new business?
In terms of the upcoming events, there was a successful grade-eight transition program this past Monday, well-attended, and as you can see, South Pacific is coming next weekend, and as Mr. Handfield alluded to, he shall be making a cameo appearance of some sort or other, I don't know, but I've heard from the high school that it promises to be, not, I'm sure his piece will be good, but that the students are really very excited and well-prepared to present, it's always a great event.
Do any of the committee members have anything on the business? That we have none, we will now move on to Mr. Didi and the business and financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item again, transfers. I have a series of transfers within the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, and nine thousand series that did not require your approval. Again, I shared these with you prior to working with the town CFO to process these. I do have a number of transfers, though, number one, from the two thousand to one thousand, from the three thousand to the four thousand, and the two thousand, as well as the two thousands to one thousand series, and these do require your, your vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we take the vote.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfers as recommended by the business manager.
I'll second that. Discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is a year-to-date budget report, and I ran this on February twenty-sixth, and as I noted in my write-up for this evening's packet, we're beginning the process of closing out the year, we're heading into, I believe, not the, the fourth quarter of fiscal year thirteen, and so what we're doing now is that we're, we're looking at our anticipated cause for the balance of the year, particularly in terms of energy, be they oil or natural gas, electricity. Again, be happy to answer any questions for you, and we're, we're heading towards the home stretch.
Through the chair, can I ask, and I apologize to ask this because I probably very much know the answer to this, but are these updated budget reports on the website?
Through the chair, yes, they are. If you go to the, I'll put this up. If you go to the, I'll put this up there tonight. But if you go to the business office and then you go to a series of links, you will see in the business office section of the webpage every dime that the district spends, both the year-to-date budget reports, my transfers that I bring before you, my revolving accounts, our CIP accounts. You'll see all the various procedures in place. So once we're done here this evening, I'll get these up there, if not tonight, probably tomorrow. But you'll, they're all there.
Yep, great. Thank you.
The next item, speaking of revolving accounts, is that, again, I bring to your attention the quarterly report on revolvings. And just a quick update, at our last meeting, you approved a new revolving account called GOTBOOKS, G-O-T-B-O-K-S. It's actually on the third page. And I highlighted that, just to bring that to your attention. Couple of things, again, about this report here. As I mentioned to you last fall, I changed the format of the report. And this is aligned with when I do my year-end report. So my successor, whomever he or she is when they come in, so I'll be done for them and they can just take these numbers and plug them in and plug them into the schedule and they'll be good. Obviously, they'll have to be updated through the end of the year. Again, we prepared this about a week or so ago. So there's probably a couple of changes here and there in a couple of accounts. Just one other comment, too, would be on the third page, I'm sorry, well, it'd be my second page here. There is a shortfall in a rental account. And the comment there is that there actually is a, there was a payment made. It just hadn't been posted to the account yet by Town Hall. And they typically do that once a month at the end of the month. Otherwise, I think you're in very, very good shape. And again, be happy to answer any questions. And before we do that, one other comment is, again, we encumber payroll for our school lunch program. You've seen this in the past, every year. And in light of the new regulation changes that Mrs. Pittson has been speaking of in prior meetings, I've been working very, very closely with her as well, keeping an eye on her revenues for FY 13. So again, be happy to answer any questions here. The next item, as I noted here, every six years, the district participates in a coordinated program review. We actually had two reviews this year, one with People Services and Dr. Lusay in terms of teaching and curriculum. But there was a financial review as well as part of this. We had a review back on November 19th. The DESI sent in an auditor. It wasn't a financial review per se, as much as it was looking at practices and procedures and processes. So what I've done is, number one, you have here the letter that the DESI sent to Dr. Brunel dated February 12, 2013. And their only observation is that we're missing a bond for employees. My response, as you will see, is that I've been working with the CFO to acquire that. And we should, and that's been something we've been going back and forth on a little bit here, here and there. However, I've also included for your information what in essence was the 16 pages of questions that the auditor asked us that day. And for that particular review, again, it was the one auditor and she met with each member of my staff for about four hours that particular day. Overall, I'm pleased with the end result. Yeah, I think she was even complimentary in one or two places, which is not too often that happens with audities. As one said to me, "It's not my job." Pout you on the back. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the last, again, is an update on our natural gas and oil. And I will say that even since we did this there, in the bill schedule that we signed off on early this evening, there were even some updates from that. What we're doing, as I mentioned a moment ago, is that we're looking at our anticipated savings and the game plan, if you will, is to take those savings and to reinvest those dollars back into the district, be they, well, a number of different areas that we're looking at. But again, be happy to answer any questions. And though this was, well, this was dated February 1st, we have had one other oil delivery, actually one today. So I will continue to update these for you as we go through the final days, key word, final, days of winter 2013, even though there's a storm looming overnight tonight, they say, so they say.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to policies, there is one thing that I failed to mention on the business. I just wanted to acknowledge myself, George and Wayne attended the football banquet Coach Cormier and his staff put on Sunday. And just what a wonderful job. They did a beautiful video display of the season. The parents and all the student athletes were there. And again, when we talked with Casey today and how he gives kudos to the rest of the staff, that all the students were invited, freshmen, sophomore. It's really, it's a team approach in that athletic program. And how truly impressed I think all three of us were. And so please pass that along from the committee. And I did acknowledge the entire committee was very appreciative of all their efforts and their successes. And five great Super Bowl wins, it's just, they're making history. We have so much to be proud of, whether it be what we're doing in the classroom, but also our student athletes. You hit the nail on the head. We're a school of less than 700. We're competing with schools that have three times our student population. And we're winning. We have teams that refuse to play us because of our success. And I think it's really, the kids need to be recognized and coaches and all the volunteers, even the girls that he acknowledged that assist with the team, the students. It was just, it was a wonderful event. So I just want to really thank him and thank you all for supporting our kids in that program and all our athletics programs are very successful. That being said, I'd like to move on to policies. And if it's okay, we can take the first three, I believe. If you wanted to take those and bundle those, which would be the executives, BEC Executive Sessions on First Reading, GBEBC Gifts to the Solicitation by Staff on First Reading, GBEB Drug-Free Workplace Policy on First Reading. I'd like to hold the other two and make a separate motion to approve because I believe there'll be some discussion.
I'll make that motion to approve those three.
One second.
Any discussion on that?
First reading.
On those first three? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hit us a vote. If someone would like to make a motion to bundle the next two, because I believe they'll be, can we do discussion on both at once with one motion?
I don't see why not, unless, as long as you're going to be discussing the vote, you can, you should be able to do that.
So I'll entertain a motion and then we can start with discussion on legal counsel.
Okay, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve on First Reading Legal Counsel BDG. Is that it? It's just that one policy, isn't it?
We can do that if you want, then make the motion on the second. That'd be easier, I think, then.
Well, because the second one is a job description, it's not a.
No, no, there's public participation at school committee meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I apologize.
But that's okay. We can take the first.
Take them separate. Actually, you know what? It may be different discussions.
Yeah. Why don't we take the first that you wrote? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. This was something that we had discussed. We had a training that came in in regards to if a school committee member basically wanted to speak with legal counsel. And I was just concerned if anyone wanted to talk about this or had any concerns with this prior to voting. That's why I asked that.
Through the chair, just so you know, the front side that looks like this on the Auburn Public Schools, this is the policy that has been in place in the Auburn Public Schools, with the reverse side being the sample policy from the MASC, Mass Association of School Committees. So they don't match. So I shared it, the two versions with you for your review and consideration.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So the section that says a school committee must approve individual committee members' access to the school, to school council with the following exception. For the purpose of collective bargaining, the involved negotiating committee members will have access to council without prior approval. Or in the case of an emergency, when the superintendent is inaccessible, the chairman will have access to the council without prior committee approval. So if somebody feels like they need to talk to council, they have to come in front of the committee and ask them for approval? Is that what, this is, this how I read it?
According to your current policy, yes.
Because when we were meeting with council, they talked, he talked about the fact that, you know, we can always ask him questions and it's, and it's sort of held confidential. So I don't know a way around it. I don't know how you get school committee approval unless somebody comes to school committee, right? That has to be done in open session or can it be done in executive session? Or, I mean, how does one come in front of the committee and say, "I want to talk to council about something that I'm worried about"? And, I mean, that's kind of an awkward situation. So how do we get around that?
I don't, well, to one of your questions, I think that to come to the committee and request, if a committee member wanted to request approval from the other committee members to speak to council, so long as they weren't disclosing what it was for, I think it would have to be done in open session, quite honestly. So I think what has happened is this has raised a good issue because currently, to my knowledge, I don't think committee members typically call the district's council. And, you know, but, but per this policy that's been in place, and I don't recall for how many years, but a number of years, approved by the Auburn School Committee, it really should only be myself, and I do communicate with council. It would be the chairperson or in his absence, the vice chairperson, unless a member came forward. So I think that, you know, what I would recommend to you at this point is, this is the sample, this is the one that's currently in place. And the reverse side is the recommended one from MASC. You know, I offer again, as I have that, it might make sense in these situations to have a subcommittee. Many committees, many school committees have subcommittees. It could only be for this number, two members. I would be happy to work with the subcommittee and try and craft something that actually fits what you're looking to have happen in this case, to do some of the wordsmithing around it. Because based on what I had heard from the discussion that happened, I don't think currently either samples here really meet the sense that I was getting from the committee as a whole in that discussion.
The only comment that I'd make is, I don't see that this committee, since I've been here, is reaching out to legal counsel. But they brought up a good point about some districts where you have a committee member that's, for the lack of a better word, maybe you have the reservation a little bit on certain issues and they decide to call on a daily basis to legal counsel, incurring these huge fees. So there has to be something in place so we have some checks and balances when someone is going. But I can tell you that if any member of this board was to say to me, or so do you, "I have an issue with something. I think I need to talk to legal counsel", we would never say no, because we've never done that before. It's something serious to you. So I think the committee member should, in this case, there has to be some oversight as far as the person's not abusing that privilege, you know, because obviously there's a cost involved. But I just don't see any member of this, I know we have to think long-term, but this board, if there's an issue, would have to come before the committee to speak with council, I think, is.
Yeah, and I think the issue of, if I may, I think the issue is exactly what you're saying, is it may not pertain to the five of us, but that changes yearly.
It does.
You never know. And you can, and you don't want to have to put a policy in place after damage has been done. If somebody was to, you know, cure all these legal fees, that we'd have to pay them as we're trying to, you know, put a policy together. So I would, I would be in favor of maybe putting a subcommittee together and trying to come up with something. I mean, I, personally, I thought that the policy was, my mistake, was that they had to, that the person had to go to the chair and the chair could approve it. I didn't realize it said the whole committee, so.
That was my understanding after that meeting. I thought that's what we discussed at the meeting, you know?
That, I think maybe I may have, that may have been what I said because that's what I thought the policy said. So that, I don't remember, but that might have been how that came up.
Is there anyone else that would like to serve on that with Liz?
Oh, I sort of.
I thought you said you wanted to.
I wanted it done. She wanted it done.
How'd that happen, Liz? Is there anyone that would like to serve on a subcommittee to look into this?
I'd be happy to do it. That's fine.
Sorry if I wanted to. I apologize.
Before you, before you, yeah, I mean, my big concern about this, now that it's been brought forward, is that if somebody needs to talk to legal counsel, they can't wait two weeks before our next meeting. And usually, when you need to talk to legal, it's something you really need to get done right away. So, I mean, without, you know, jumping the gun here or anything, yeah. I would think that, you know, if the person can just call the chair. I think the chair should have the authority to just do that instead of.
And you could even put into place that if, you know, after the third request from the same person, that it has to be, you know, that the chair has to, has to inform the committee or something, you know?
I understand at that point, but, but what if, just say, whether you're chairman or anybody else's chairman, if you go to the chairman and you're requesting to talk to legal counsel, do you have to explain it to the chairman why you want to go?
No.
You say, "I want to go to legal counsel and if you're not ridiculously doing it, you're going to be fine."
I wouldn't want to know, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm not.
Unless you wanted to tell me.
Well, it depends on the issue.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But I mean, I don't want to be where any committee member on this board is going to be limited.
I would like to even state one step further. I think that's a good point you make. I would think it's just the notification to the chair. I am, I am not in a point to deny him. So I would like it in the policy that he's just notifying me so I can advise the superintendent, "You're going to be getting a bill." I'm not going to say that even that's, that's no. I think that you're right. Once it becomes we noticing a pattern, when legal counsel calls, then it goes before the committee and then we can, we can say no. We can stop it.
You can even put that, something into the policy like that.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, that's what we're saying, yeah.
And I think, well, that's just discussing it. I'm not sure a subcommittee really needs to take place. I think.
I now have a good sense. I could craft it.
What we're looking for. I think if you just draft something and.
And again, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking about any of the five of us because I really don't have an issue with, I don't think that's going to be an issue with any of us. But, you know, I don't even know if legal counsel could, you know, if he, if he starts seeing this person coming in with sort of these ridiculous, you know, items, if he can contact the superintendent and say, you know, "The district is paying this bill and I'm not sure that this is."
I would think it behooves him to do that ethically, that we're paying the bill.
But I think what Jeff's recommendation was, you know, if it's, you know, if it's the third, oh, but we may not know that he's calling, he or she is calling.
It would be our policy and legal counsel would know. Once you start receiving multiple calls, we would.
Well, and if you're notifying the chairman, the chairman can say, you know, this is five times in two weeks. We're going to, you know, something.
Well, and also, you know, it's not just per call, right? It's how long it takes.
That's true, too.
So that he's billing you by the hour. So you could have somebody going on and on and on, getting some pretty, you know.
Yeah, they gave us some really good examples of some.
Well, some of those will help you prolong it.
Yeah, I know, that's what.
Well, there you go. Yes, we've had those. So, yeah.
But yeah, I think, Dr. Brunel, I think you've got a gist of what we're looking for, yes? You comfortable with that?
I am, I am.
If you need, like, you know, if you need to meet.
Do whatever you show.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I guess I'll resend my motion and we'll table this.
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll resend my motion to approve this. Who seconded it, someone's going to resend?
To my second.
Okay, and then I'll make the motion that we table this.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All of them, paper?
Aye.
And now we can move on to our last policy of the evening, which is the public participation.
First is our current, and then when you turn it over, file the EDH, that's the, right? Correct. And the, through the chair, the difference is, on the reverse side that has the MASC, their model policy, ours includes an item number eight. And this, again, is the policy that's been in effect for a number of years. Many years.
You added the number eight, you're saying, right?
No, no, I would say, no, this policy on the front, this policy's been in effect for a number of years in the Auburn Public Schools. I'm saying the only difference between the Auburn one and this is the number eight.
Them and this is the number eight opposite side.
Right. And that, that number eight was added many years ago when this policy was first approved. And I think that's where the three minutes came from. Remember from a previous discussion that the policy listed didn't match what was on the agenda.
Yeah, and, yeah, and item, line item three on here is not, that's not true.
What's that?
People come in and make comments, they're not, they're not necessarily making comments or concerns about the agenda. They're talking about different things. The third, the third bullet says the topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. That is not what has taken place in the past.
Which I disagree with, but that's my...
No, I'm just saying that that's what's written.
Right, no, I understand.
If you haven't been following that, you know, so...
Do we want to keep that?
And then the, on number two, on the new one there, it says, "Speak at all three minutes," and then it says, "Our presiding chairman may permit extensions of this time." I thought we agreed that the committee would vote on extending the time.
Through the chair, you, you did, so that's why, so, for what's on the, on the agenda, that section at the bottom, that's right here now, it goes through and it says, you know, a maximum of three minutes per topic, per person, up to 15 minutes, and then with the approval of the majority of the school committee. So what you've approved here on this agenda is not what the actual policy that you have as a school committee, so they need to be put together. But I just brought it before you to get input, and I'm happy to make changes to it.
Well, that's one of them. I don't agree with number three either, but...
Is that something the majority of the committee would like to omit?
I wouldn't mind omitting that, because I don't think that an item necessarily needs to be on the agenda. They're only speaking for a maximum three minutes unless we give them longer, so I really don't think it's hurting anything. But bringing up something that might come up between a two or three week session...
But I think if it's a long, if it's going to be a lengthy discussion, I think we should put it on the agenda.
Yes, you would ask to, ask to have it put on the agenda.
Oh, no, I, I can understand that. If, if...
That's number eight.
In the discussion, then that's fine, but if it's, I mean, the way this is, I can't, I won't agree to this. I can't, well, I won't vote for it. I mean, the committee can vote for it, but I have a problem with number two and three.
Well, three we really haven't been following, so I think that needs to be taken out. I mean, you know, citizens' comments, they come in, they're, I yet to have them come in and make a comment regarding what we're, we've got on our agenda that evening. It's usually some other topic. It's not what's on the agenda. So that needs to, I think that needs to come out, because...
We'll agree to number three coming out.
Mr. Chair, could we, could we go each number and discuss it? Like, if everybody agrees number one, then we'll get that one off and then go down, please?
Yes.
I don't have an issue with number one, if any.
I don't either.
I'm fine with one.
The chairman shall determine the length of the public, you don't have a problem with that?
Oh, well...
Through the chair, I think actually, if we go by what's on the bottom of the agenda, you actually have set in effect a time limit, you know, up to 15 minutes per topic, but then stating that the, based on the affirmative vote of the majority of the school committee, that could be waived, so...
But I agree, but that's not in the policy.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is that, right, right, yeah.
So you want to change chairperson to the committee?
Yes.
The committee will determine, shall determine the length.
But, but what we decided before was that it would be 15 minutes per topic. I mean, do you want to take that last sentence out of number one, and then number two, we put in what, the verbiage that we have at the bottom of the agenda?
Is that something we already voted on, correct?
You've already voted on this. I actually think that, that makes sense to do that.
So two will be the verbiage at the bottom of the executive session, I'm sorry, at the bottom of the agenda?
I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I, I think, I think Wayne will. But I, I mean, I don't. I, I think if it starts to get lengthy in nature, it should be an agenda item, and then we can talk about it. It's on the agenda.
Well, I mean, I voted against it originally, too.
Mm-hmm, nope.
But, that's all right.
So...
And I think what we need to do here is, I, I think we need to take these, these, individually, these eight things and, and vote on them individually. Because we've got some committee members who are fine with one, but then when you go into two, so when you go to, you go to, we go and make a motion to approve all these changes, you're going to have, there's going to be pieces of it that people aren't going to approve of.
Well, you're going to, we're going to run into that if we, if we vote on each one individually. Because if one person, if, if Wayne doesn't like the verbiage for number two, he's not going to vote for this at all, anyway.
Correct.
As an example, so...
Okay, okay.
But I, I would just ask if, Wayne, if you don't like the verbiage that we voted on, would you be willing to give us your, what you think should be on there, so that we can consider it?
What, on number two?
Well, we decided we were going to take number two out, and we were going to, we were going to, we were going to replace it with what is on the bottom of the agenda, which you said you didn't vote for.
Starting with if you wish.
Right, if you wish to speak before the committee?
Notifying the superintendent's office would be one.
No, no, you're, we're starting with if you wish.
Yeah, okay, I just caught that, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I really don't like the, the 15 minute per topic, and I don't like the three minutes. The only other thing I would...
But the majority of the committee can extend it.
Right.
Would you have unlimited time, then? Or would you have just more time?
No, I just have, I'd like to see more time.
So what, what would you...
Well, the total of 15 minutes. I would, if I was going to do it, I'd go a total of a half an hour for everybody, not just a group of people got 15 minutes, no matter who speaks and who don't. At least it gives them more time to speak.
Well, that, with this said, you would have five, you would be able to hear from five people.
Yeah, for three minutes.
For three minutes each.
To tell you the truth, Liz, I really have a problem with this whole limiting.
This is just for non-agenda items.
Correct. Right, this is citizens' comment.
No, you can't, we have to limit it. You could, you could, seriously, you could have people in here for hours if you didn't have a limit on it. And, and they could just, you could have people coming up and saying the same thing over and over.
That would have to go on the agenda. How would people feel, well, take out number two, right, but, how would you feel if we had added to the agenda a citizens' comment at the end of the meeting?
I don't, the problem is, I think we would need the next meeting for the superintendent to research what the person is bringing forward during citizens' comments. You're talking that same meeting of citizens' comments?
Yes, I don't, you know, I...
But I think in 15 minutes, you should be able to, I believe, articulate what the nature of the problem is, and then the superintendent can research and bring that information back to the committee as an agenda item, and then we can all discuss it having more information.
You know, I'm going to make, I'm going to make this real easy. You guys vote the way you want on it, I'm not, I can't vote in favor of this.
Well, I'm going to, I'll be honest with you, when I, when I listen to citizens' comments, it's really for a determination as to whether or not I want it to be an agenda item. I'm not, it's, citizens' comments, to me, is not an, not an opportunity for us to make a decision that night. It's to hear a problem, it's to hear a concern from citizens, and then we decide if we need to put it on the agenda, as I said. So how much time do you need to determine that? And...
I mean, we can, if, if the 15 minutes expires, or the three minutes expires, and I would say, yeah, to take out the chairperson shall determine the length of public participation, I would go back, revert back to what we had originally voted on, as this committee, the majority voted on, that the three members of this board, the majority, could say, "No, that 15 minutes was not adequate time, your three minutes was not adequate. We want you to continue to provide us the information we need to research this problem." Because I, I don't want you or anyone in the public to think that anyone on the committee wants to censor anybody, but we do have other items that we have to address, and I think making it an agenda item when it's serious, that if we're going to prolong it more than 15 minutes, that it is put on the agenda and it's given the time it needs to be discussed. But in a lot of cases, someone will come forward, and none of us just really have the answers, whether it be tennis court lighting, or the other issues that we faced, even, even the naming of a square, where that took hours and hours and hours, different meetings behind the, you know, meeting with subcommittees, et cetera.
Mr. Derek, perhaps we could put in here at the end of comments on a subject, that the committee takes a vote as to whether or not it will be on an agenda item. And that way, everybody's sort of under, as they're listening, they're trying to determine if this is something that's worthy of an agenda item, and then when that 15 minutes is up, we have, we have, if we're taking a vote, if not, people are still not satisfied and, and not ready to make that vote yet, then they would extend it. So maybe that's a way to, to sort of, Dr. Vannell, I mean, is that something that is, you feel is an acceptable thing to put into the policy?
I mean, I think so. A couple of issues, actually, that I see is, is we're rereading this. On the bottom of the agenda, from a comment, I think it was Mrs. Gibbey that made this, what this currently reads on here is if you wish to speak before the committee on a specific agenda item. I don't know, based on the conversation that I'm hearing from you, that you want that to be there, because what I've heard is, a citizens' comment is likely to be something that's not on the agenda. So I think at the very least, you want to, I'm hearing, to eliminate that, so that if you wish to speak before the committee during citizens' comments, or concerns or comments, so to open that up. I think, too, that, based on as it's currently read, there could feasibly be three, four, five, as many different topics as possible, that you could spend, you could hear for 15 minutes, even without an approval of the committee. 15 minutes on a topic, say, on the tennis sites, and then 15 minutes on a topic, say, on the field usage, and 15 minutes on every different one. But I think as, as the current policy says, is that, you know, at some point, and I think the major, David Boder, I think is a good example of that, that was something that was going to require deliberation, lots of discussion. You even decided to send it to a subcommittee to try and bring forward, that at some point, if it's going to be something that is, that requires the committee's attention, I think it should be on an agenda at some point. And that way, not only is it for the person who brings it forward, the purpose of putting it on the agenda is this gets posted, so everybody in the community can see that that's going to be a topic of discussion for the committee, and they can come in and weigh in favor, or against it, or at least come in and hear about it. So that's really the intention of putting it on the agenda, is to say to the Auburn community residents, this is going to be something that we're going to be taking up.
Because if you're sitting at home in your slippers, and you are interested in what this person is saying...
Sure.
You may not be able to get here, so...
But do you agree with taking out, is from what I've heard, the on a specific agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's, the majority of us feel that way.
Yes.
Yes.
And I think at that point, we could omit one and two, and put that paragraph, if you wish, up in the place of one and two.
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at? And I can, I can say that I'm pretty comfortable, I, I think I said this at a previous meeting, that we can waive the three minute per person or fifteen, or 15 minutes per subject time as a school committee. I'm comfortable with that language. I thi, I think, I think that, that kind of, that kind of allows us to stay on a subject if we, if we feel it's important, the majority of the committee does. It's, it's not unanimous.
Through the chair, I think you're actually eliminating, omitting one, two, and three, right?
Yes.
And replacing with...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Because that's the agenda portion. I, I mean, I'm fine with, with four.
Four?
I mean, improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Obviously, we're not going to tolerate that for improper conduct.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, five, I think that's how we run our meetings, rub its rules.
We do it anyway.
Six, any issues with that?
I'm fine with it as well.
Do we need, you know, not that I want to make this policy cumbersome, but do we need to be a little more specific there, where it's not, because right here, you're talking about school personnel, but we did have a situation where other names and things came up in the conversation that really were not appropriate.
If, if it says, how about when it says against any member of the school community, would that cover students and others?
Yeah.
Or do you want to put it as another...
I think that could be any member of the community.
Yeah.
Or, or even say by, by name, I mean, or even just put by...
Yeah, by using names or something. I'd say what you're trying to get at.
By the person's name, or something to that, you know?
You can bring up criticism, but you can't use people's names.
Right.
Right.
And I think...
Yeah, you're overdoing, kind of overdoing it.
Two, from the advice given, is you can't allow someone to state something that's illegal.
Right.
Right, by using names.
Well, even beyond that, even beyond that, if something, they incriminated themselves legally with an issue. So that might be something that I would run by legal counsel to be sure that it included...
And that we just don't want to violate any, anyone's privacy issue.
Yep, exactly, the privacy issue is one.
So I, I'd like to see something like that in there. Obviously, we don't want to, you could even put in there, you know, the violations of Massachusetts general laws or town bylaws or...
I don't have a problem with complaints and stuff like that. I don't have a problem with complaints and stuff like that, as long as they don't use names, as far as the rest of it goes.
Yeah, no, I was just concerned that, yeah.
Right, using somebody's name, I understand that.
It can't just be a name, though, because you could say the high school principal, you could say, it's kind of identifying any, any way to identify the person.
Right, well, you can, but you're not, but you're not illegally, you're not illegally bound.
That's what we want to say.
If you're using their names, you can be legally bound.
Yeah, but you might as well be using their name if you're using their title.
You're identifying them.
Well, that's what Dr. Vannella is going to check with legal counsel and the right wording for that, so we know what we're trying to get at.
Okay, so now it would be on hold.
So-
Comment on line three.
May I not have a problem with that, with the providing something in writing?
Sure.
And I think eight is appropriate. I don't know if any other committees have a problem with it, but I don't.
All right, let's get back to seven again.
Well, if this is during, if this is during citizens' comments, as Liz had suggested, if we're going to take a vote whether or not to put it on the agenda, I don't see where the written request is required.
Yeah.
I mean, if this is strictly, I understand how we want to, if somebody wants to put an agenda item on, you know, just coming in off the street, and we want a written request, but if it's a result of a citizens' comment action, I don't think-
But I think that's what it's saying. If you're anticipating that it's going to be of a lengthy nature, you can come in and request to be put on the agenda. Because you don't want to come in at citizens' comments, you won't be put on the agenda that night. So if it's something you need to talk about that night, you're going to want to be put on the agenda.
And I, through the chair, if you go back to the agenda, to that first comment, the first paragraph of that says that if you wish to be placed, and that has happened in the past, people have asked to be placed on the agenda, it goes through the chair for his or her approval, and then gets put on, just as the agenda is a requirement for the chairperson. I would suggest that rather than the 72 hours prior, that may not always allow us to comply with the open meeting law, because the weekends now count with that. So this here reads, must be made seven days prior to the scheduled meeting. That's more realistic, because we try to get you the agenda out and posted a week before. So I think you'd want to stay with something a little longer. For someone who's planning to come on a specific purpose and they know and they're planning for it, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yes.
Because they can still come the night of the meeting.
Sure.
Feel it's something they have to get out for the last minute.
Wayne, did you have a question on seven? I'm sorry.
We moved on to eight.
No, I'm not setting it.
Okay. So I think we're good. Obviously, we're going to take-
Okay, so I guess I'll make a motion that we ask Dr. Vannella to make those revisions and we'll table this for the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Do you have a second? Or do we have a second? Then we'll have discussion. Okay, I'll second that discussion.
Chair, has someone written down how exactly how we have changed one of those?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Dr. Vannella, she's written it all down. She was taking notes.
Oh, do you read it back right now?
If you don't mind.
Sure, I will do my best. Okay, so on B E D H, we will eliminate items one, two, and three, and replace instead with the bottom paragraph, beginning with if you wish to speak before the committee, eliminating on a specific agenda item and keeping the rest as currently written. Number four has been agreed to, as has number five. Number six, I will add in, in check with counsel regarding any privacy issues, identifying references, or any, to not allow anything that would be in violation of mass general or other laws. Number seven is fine, and in place of number eight, we would use the first paragraph at the bottom of the agenda. And that's for someone who comes with it planned.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was only looking for the beginning, but that's great.
Okay.
Love that you-
Okay.
Very clever.
See how it looks when it goes back from the press?
It's going to look great.
We need to take a vote.
Don't bet on it.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of what?
Of her majority.
Sending it to me. You're not voting on the policy.
Okay, making the changes.
Yeah.
For the record, that's why I asked, I just wanted to make sure that I understood the changes before we voted at one. So this is all together.
Oh, you may have to win there.
I hope not.
Now we can move on to personnel. I believe we have one.
There is one job description before you. This is the one, the position that currently Mrs. Turcat capably fills, and it is my recommendation that you approve it. She has reviewed it, as has Mr. Deanie and myself at length.
I'll make that motion to oppose the assistant to the business manager, job description.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to go into executive session?
We do, yes, on the bottom of the superintendent's memo, actually. It misses, actually, on the bottom of the agenda, it's the same.
So I will add the same motion.
Make a motion for MGL chapter 3A, section 21A2, to discuss strategy with regard to negotiations with a non-youth personnel, for section 21A3, to discuss strategy with regard to litigation, and for section 21A4, to discuss strategy with regard to security. Second.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Roll call, Wayne.
Mrs. Ribbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibbrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Scobie?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Loring?
Yes. Good night, everyone.